Good evening. I'd like to call the Anacortes City Council meeting of October 24th, 2022 to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? So I'm going to need to amend tonight's agenda to add an executive session at the beginning of our meeting pursuant to Section 4230-110 of the Revised Code of Washington to discuss litigation or potential litigation. The length of the executive session will be 15 minutes, after which council will return to council chambers and no action will be taken during the executive session. So again, thank you all for coming and showing up, but we'll be back shortly. Okay, the city council is adjourned from the executive session where no action was taken, but I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add item 7C into other business, which is termination of contract 20032SEW008.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
I move to add the contract termination item to the agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. McDougal, second by Mr. Young. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, so we'll add the item 7C on tonight's agenda. Thank you. Okay, we're on to item three, which is announcements and committee reports. I have two announcements, and I see we probably have some folks, I've got a couple folks signed up, but we'll get to public comment in a minute. Trestle update, so we've gotten, our demolition permits are just about, they should be done by now. We'll move into our, we have our structural drawings should be complete by the end of the week, and then that will allow us to get our final cost estimate. We'll finalize the remaining permits and work towards demolition in short order. So we're getting really close to not only giving you a date, at least on demolition, but a total cost of repairs, but we're just waiting for a couple more bids there. And then the other announcement I have is Monday, the next Monday is the fifth Monday, so we traditionally do not have a council meeting, and we are not planning on one, but it is also Halloween, and it is downtown trick-or-treating from 3:30 to 5:30 PM. So just be aware that that's going on. And on the consent agenda, there's a street fair application for closed streets. So, okay, so first up on committee reports is Housing Affordability Community Services Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. So we met on October 20th. We talked, we just kind of did a little bit of a rundown of what's going on with the community. There was homelessness encampment at Sharp's Corner where the roundabout is, and fortunately, the police department, the city, worked with the property owner and was able to move that kind of encampment out, and then also the property owner, I believe, cleared almost 20 yards of garbage. So that's cleaned up, and now the police are able to work with the property owner to make sure that that's, if there's anyone trespassing, they can issue citations. So that's one good thing that we got done. We continue, the city is working on a number of derelict properties, working with property owners, or taking the next steps to deal with some of those problem addresses that have been brought up with the community members. We talked a little bit about the designated crisis response. We had one person in our community who was able to utilize that service, but the DCR, the person who can come and do that work is, takes quite a long time because we don't have a designated one for Fidalgo Island. Compass Health was thinking about doing one, having one here, and adding one here in Camino Island, so hopefully we are going to follow up with them about that. And then we also had Alan Workman from Habitat for Humanity kind of talk to us about preparing his presentation, their presentation to council and the greater community about working with the city on a parcel and possibly having some affordable owned homes. So they are going to probably meet, I think it was the last Monday in November, they'll come to council, so that was kind of, that's great to hear. And then finally, we just talked a little bit about the housing action plan that is going to Planning Commission on Wednesday. That's it.
Okay, 3B is Planning Committee report.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Planning Committee met just prior to this meeting, and it was council members Cleland McGrath, council member Walters, and I, and Planning Department staff, and we had a presentation from Meredith McElmoyl about the creative district that the Arts Commission is improving. So we learned about that program, which is administered by the Washington State Arts Commission. It started in 2017, and some of the goals of that program are to bolster the creative economy, including tourism and local business support. So the creative district includes arts, artisans, restaurants, breweries, architects. So it would encompass initially a walking area in downtown, and we have a whole list of the businesses that already qualify as creative businesses, and so it's a really exciting opportunity. And also part of it is to help keep artists in Anacortes, artists that live here to enable them to stay living here, considering our elevated cost of living here. So Meredith will be coming to council and the public with a presentation on that, but we were excited to hear what she had to say and how that application process is going. Then she briefed us on the proposed community art and cultural center, which is a completely different project, but is, the hope is to have that where the current movie theater is, and there's talk of it being a two-floor building, or maybe a three-floor building with workforce housing on the third floor, but that's all still in the early stages. But they do have some plans in the works, and Meredith will also be coming to council and the public with details about that at a near-term date. One of the concerns is about, you know, losing the movie theater, of course, we've heard from a lot of constituents about that, but there are opportunities for maybe not first-run movies, but all kinds of other movies and film festivals, and so they're working really hard to determine how film and film festivals can be a part of that community art and cultural center, which will also include a whole bunch of other things, like Fidalgo Dance Works, the Anacortes Music Project, performance space, maker space, all kinds of good stuff. So anyway, more to come on that. And then we, that was pretty much it, except for the R4 bonus height work plan is also going to Planning Commission on Wednesday night with the draft housing action plan with recommendations for code revision, so that's going to be an exciting Planning Commission meeting on Wednesday night. And lastly, just a reminder that tomorrow night here in council chambers, we are hosting a housing forum, talking about why housing is so important for all of us in Anacortes, and with some speakers, including our own Ryan Walters, Dustin Johnson, Alan Rhodes, Tina Tate, and I'm forgetting someone else, but it's, who? Josh Baldwin. So we have, yep, him here too. So it's going to be a really worthwhile event, so I hope you can make it tomorrow night at 6:00 right here. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. 3C is Public Safety Committee, but I think that's a carryover from last week. But also a carryover from last week, Skagit County Law and Justice Report, and I think Mr. Carter.
Thank you. So yeah, we met two weeks ago, and we had two topics that are, main topics that we talked about were reportable. One of them is the mayors in Skagit County of Seidro, Mount Vernon, Burlington, Anacortes, put together a letter to send off to our local legislator addressing the RCW for vehicle pursuits, and also House Bill 1140, addressing juveniles and questioning by law enforcement, and kind of urging the legislators ahead of the session to kind of address those, take another look at them, change them a little bit, so that the law enforcement can better use the tools that they're given and the training they're given to combat drugs and homelessness and questioning. The other topic that we talked about, Sheriff McDermott and Chief Kamik kind of led a discussion on the future of the Law and Justice Committee, and the possibility of working with experts and other individuals, and how our county can better improve services for behavior health, substance abuse, and homelessness, and kind of bringing those people into our committee to come up with a plan of action to address those issues.
Okay, thanks. Any other announcements and committee reports before I move on to a award of merit presentation? Okay, item 3E, Mayor Award of Merit Presentations, as in plural, and Mr. Meesimer will introduce some folks. Mr. Meesimer.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the audience. Mr. Rob Fiesinger, our deputy building official, and Mr. Dave Eichels, our permit coordinator, are receiving the Mayor's Award of Merit this evening. And, you know, folks might think that our building department just runs by itself. Well, it doesn't. It's because of people like Rob and Dave that it flows so smoothly and keeps the permits going out the door. During the COVID pandemic, Mr. Friesinger and Mr. Eichels identified some needs that would help those permits even flow more smoothly by having digital submittals, and even having a drop box by the back door where folks could put their permits in. And so where so where other jurisdictions like Skagit County were taking six and seven months to get permits out the door, our city was getting those permits out the door in three to four weeks at the maximum. So Dave and Rob have shown that they can work with our Planning Committee and Economic Development Team to implement various systems to make things progress even better. And in my opinion, they are stellar at customer service, and with that, I thank them for their hard work and their service. Dave, Rob, come on up.
All right, while they're coming up, I will have to echo the sentiment there. When I hear the bell ring sometimes, you know, when somebody comes up to the permit counter, it's just great to know we have such wonderful professionals to help folks out. You know, we have a lot of customer-facing departments, divisions in the city, but it's really great to have these, these two gents doing that facing. So with that, and they sealed the envelope, so I couldn't see what awesome restaurant gift card is in here, and that it might get emptied, but, so you'll, you'll get it, you'll get your cards. But with that, I'll come around and we'll do some photos. Okay, we're on to item four, which is public comment. This is the opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any item that's not on our agenda. And I've got two folks signed up. And again, you're welcome to come on up and address the council. I have Mary Jo McCardle. You're, you're okay? Okay. And Bruce, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna get the last name, mispronounce her last name again, so I'll let you say it for the record.
It's Bruce Bagleen. I live in Old Town. And I mentioned on the little sign-up sheet, K Avenue, Street End. And what brought it to mind today was I was walking down to my slip at the Anchor Cove Marina after I'd written out the check for the property taxes that I pay on it. And I see there's a homeless person living in an RV on the street end. Well, in, you know, we seem to have a lot of money. We spent about $100,000 making a park on an alley up by the Penguin Coffee. This is city property. Perhaps we could make it a park and evict the homeless guy, and we go over to wherever they live. Is that something you would consider? I guess there's no response.
Typically, this is an opportunity for you to address the council, not for us, the council, to engage in debate with you.
Okay, so I'm just putting this, I'm putting this out there. I think it would be a great idea. The warehouse burned to the ground, and it's privately owned. But this is a street end. In Seattle, most of the street ends along Lake Washington are actually parks. And it would, we need waterfront parks. We could get it on the cheap. You don't even have to do anything, just evict the homeless guy.
Thank you. Anybody else who didn't sign up, want to address the council? I've got three attendees online. I'll look for a hand to raise. All right. Chief Floyd, do you want to come up at this point, or you want to wait? I think maybe we can wait till your budget presentation, address some of the, some of the things that we've been working on as far as some of the public safety issues that we've been hearing from the community. But Chief will be up later to discuss his budget and talk about a few things that we're working on. All right, we're on to item five, A, B, C, D, and E, Consent Agenda, council.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to approve the consent agenda, items A through E.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath to approve a consent agenda, items A through E. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're on to our public hearings. This is item six A, Resolution 3099, updating the work plan adopted in Resolution 3082 regarding bonus height provisions in the R4 use zone west of commercial use, west of the commercial use zone related to ordinance 4031. And this is discussion, possible action, and public comment is welcome. Mr. Meesmer.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the audience. Resolution 3099 establishes a work plan related to the moratorium extended by ordinance 4031 on accepting land use applications in the R4 use zone west of the commercial use zone using the bonus height provisions of AMC 19.42.050C, where at least 25% of the units are not more than 600 square feet, which would allow for an additional 10 feet above the base height of 40 feet in the R4 use zone to 50 feet. The attached work plan seeks to set path forward for community engagement and eventually a Planning Commission recommendation to the city council. Staff begins work on this, on this project at the October 26 Planning Commission meeting, introducing the draft Anacortes Housing Action Plan and the draft bonus height concepts that were previously identified by city council for the Planning Commission to begin work on. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, or if not, certainly, there might be members of the public who wish to weigh in.
Any members of the public would like to comment on this item? And don't see any hand raised for our attendees online. Council. I think all the dates are laid out in the plan, and I think the next key date is the 26th of October, Planning Commission.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. You know, I'm going to move to approve the Resolution 3099. I just wanted to add that this has been something we've labored over, trying to figure out what's the right thing to do for the city. And that struggle is in the, hopefully, is in acknowledging the fact that, you know, we need more housing, we need density. And, you know, I'm just not always sure that we're gonna make everybody happy with what we're attempting to do in this, and we're gonna give it our best shot. But I do think at the end of the day, this time, whatever solution we come out of it, my hope is that it serves everybody and serves the city well. I'm just looking forward to sort of getting this behind us, such that we can move forward as a city to do the things that we need to do to make sure everybody is accommodated as best as we can. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and I did hear a motion in there.
And, and, thank you, Mayor, for that. I make a motion to approve Resolution 3099, adopting a work plan related to ordinance 4031.
Second. Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Carter. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
When this was before us, just a couple of weeks ago, for the purpose of extending the moratorium, my comments were in suggestion that we integrate the work on the moratorium itself with our housing options proposal that will emerge from the Housing Action Plan. The Housing Action Plan being a strategic level document, and a housing options ordinance being a regulatory document that would prescribe additional options for missing middle housing. Missing middle housing are things other than five-story buildings that can help fulfill some of our housing needs. So this work plan doesn't quite do that. It doesn't really integrate the work on the moratorium, the work on the, the bonus height in this one particular zone, into the work on missing middle housing, into the work on the housing options ordinance. However, there were several of us at our last meeting on this who did also say that we want this to be the last extension of the moratorium. I similarly think that we need to finish this work. So I think that Mr. Meesmer maybe has found a happy medium where we present the Housing Action Plan draft, and most, maybe most importantly, our existing conditions report to the Planning Commission this week on Wednesday, and also start talking about the preferred concepts. But what will be missing in this is that there are, it is possible to fill some of our housing gap with things other than five-story buildings. And it's that interplay between what can we achieve with missing middle housing versus what can we achieve with taller buildings that will be lost in this. So I think, you know, we've missed basically every deadline in these work plans so far, and we should not bind ourselves too tightly to this work plan. If, as the public process unfolds, we should see how things are going and see if we are missing that interaction to a substantial degree, and then potentially revisit it. I don't, I don't want to have that discussion without having a holistic discussion about where housing goes citywide and how we can achieve it without being overly disruptive. As a general matter, we should integrate, not dominate, the landscape with, with new development. So I'll vote for it for now, but hoping that we all are flexible going forward.
Okay, thanks. I have a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Carter. Mr., any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thanks. We're on to other business. Item seven A, Ordinance 4024, daycare use category and principal uses permitted in residential zones, amendments to facilitate the development of daycare II facilities in the R4 zone. And Ms. Pollard is going to be presenting, and this is a discussion item. Ms. Pollard, whenever you're ready. I try to give enough time for you to get everything set up.
Scoot this out of the way, and yes. Thank you, Mayor, council members, members of the public. I would like to present ordinance 4024, daycare II facilities in the R4 zone. My presentation will go over background information, an overview of process, as well as a quick refresher on the R4 zone and some code language. I'll also present some information that the Planning Commission and members of council had requested. Quick background. Action on the subject of daycare II facilities in the R4 zone began in July 2021, when city council adopted an interim ordinance temporarily permitting daycare II facilities as an outright permitted use in the R4 zone. Since then, we have had two, or we have extended the interim development regulations two times, which has brought us now to where we are today. Since interim ordinance was adopted, two daycare II facilities have been permitted in the R4 zone, the Fiddlehead School expansion for the intended use of providing preschool class to the existing Montessori school, and the Anacortes Family Center's new development near the hospital called Landing Apartments, excuse me, Landing Apartments. On September 14th, Planning Commission held a public hearing, which concluded with the commissioners passing a motion of recommendation that city council approve the proposed development regulations amendments, with one recommended change. And we will go over that more as we continue through the presentation. Daycare II is defined as a facility providing more than 12 individuals with ongoing and regular group care, protection and supervision at a location away from their primary residence. These types of facilities can provide care for children or for adults, and include facilities like adult daycare, adult day health centers, social daycare, as well as preschools, private kindergartens, nursery schools, and programs covering before and after-school care. Prior to the adoption of the interim ordinance, daycare II facilities in the R4 zone required a conditional use permit, which is established as a type four review process, our highest and most significant review process level. Type four review processes can be lengthy, expensive, and the applicant must go through the process with some uncertainty on the approval of their proposal. As just summarized, daycare II facilities in the R4 zone would require conditional use permit process. This process is intended to be used for the review of establishing either uses that may be of unusual size, infrequent occurrences, possibly safety hazards or other detrimental effects on surrounding properties. And to ensure these types of uses are properly located with respect to the objectives of the municipal code and the comprehensive plan, criteria must be addressed. As there are not any specific conditional use permit criteria for daycares, only the general conditional use permit criteria would be addressed. This criteria includes many general development standards that are already required in the code, such as access to the site being appropriately designed, off-street parking, and loading facilities are adequate, the amount and location of open space is achieved, and the external effects of the use, such as lighting and noise generation, are not inconsistent with the adjacent or nearby uses. In permitting a conditional use, some of the possible conditions that the decision-maker may impose in addition to the regulations and standards expressly specified in code are things like increasing the required lot size, or yard dimensions, or increasing the number of off-street parking or loading spaces. These are items staff believes have been addressed in the proposed new code language that we will continue to review. For reference, here is an aerial image outlining our R4 zone. You can see roughly a two, two-and-a-half block width at the top of the page from 10th Street down to 29th Street. This is just west of Commercial, and about a one-block width on the east side of Commercial that runs from 22nd Street south to Highway 20, and then over east to V Avenue. The term R4 is the abbreviated term for the residential high-density zone. In addition to providing high-density residential uses within walking distance of public transit and commercial areas, the R4 zone is intended to be a buffer of sorts between the high-intensity uses of commercial and industrial development from lower-intensity residential areas. The municipal code states use of the R4 zone is appropriate for areas designated residential high-density in the comprehensive plan. Here we have policy LU 6.5 from the comprehensive plan that specifically calls out daycare centers as a compatible non-residential use to be allowed. Here I wanted to go over some of the current R4 regulations to make sure that we all have the, the right kind of development in mind when thinking about this ordinance. Under current codes, some outright permitted uses in the R4 zone include multiple family developments with no density limit, assisted living facilities, rooming houses, religious institutions, and open space parks, plazas, and that sort. Additionally, the general development regulations for the R4 zone permits buildings up to 40 feet, but does limit the maximum lot coverage to 50% of the lot size, requires 20% minimum landscape area, and has setbacks that consist of 10 feet for property lines fronting a street, and five feet for ground floor on interior side lot lines. Minimum square footage lot in the R4 zone is 3,000 square feet. The city has heard from Anacortes School District, Samish Indian Nation, who actually recently went through the permitting process to establish a new early learning center on D Avenue, as well as from individual residents that Anacortes needs additional childcare and early learning capacity. The importance of communities to have available, affordable, quality childcare is critical for working families. And during the peak of the pandemic shutdown, communities all over experienced how businesses, how business operations can be impacted when workers do not have available childcare. Some information that was requested from staff to present included what are our current facilities. This information was obtained by City of Anacortes Business License records, state license records, as well as just as well as just a generic Google search. These are the locations of all of our known daycare II facilities. The green dots represent the before-and-after school programs like the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA. Blue dots are your typical early, early learning, two-and-a-half, maybe three-year-olds up through five or kindergarten. The orange includes both the early learning and also our only areas where infant care is offered. And then our two pink dots are under construction, though the southern one should really be a blue dot, that is the Montessori new addition. And we'll see a site plan of that as an example of what these regulations could look like here in just a minute. One thing to note about our existing facilities that I found interesting was the infant care. We have one location that offers care to infants as young as 12 months and one that offers care down to one month, and there are no known adult daycare facilities with licenses in Anacortes. For a daycare II to receive the required state license, they must also comply with state regulations. State regulations for early learning facilities require 35 square feet of indoor space per child and an additional 15 square feet for each infant or toddler using a crib or playpen. It also requires a minimum of 75 square feet of outdoor play area per child accessing the play space, though an early learning program is permitted to use off-site outdoor play areas. But keeping in mind open space requirements, with our maximum lot coverage by building in the R4 zone of being 50%, it shouldn't be too difficult for facilities to meet this requirement onsite. There's also information here that shows what the minimum care provider to child ratio The state also has separate minimum standards for the adult daycare centers, 60 square feet of interior center space for participants, and a minimum staff-to-client ratio of one to six. It had been requested by staff, or to staff, to provide some examples of current daycare II facilities that have gone through the permitting process. Here we have the Fiddlehead School, Montessori School site on R Avenue and 27th Street. The school consists of three detached buildings. The newest permitted one is on the west side, addressed off of 27th Street. The total site altogether is just shy of 12,000 square feet, and the total square footage for all buildings is just over 3,000 square feet. They have eight onsite parking spaces, and their current enrollment is approximately 42 students, though the maximum enrollment could possibly go up to 53. Additionally, here we have a permitted early learning center from the Anacortes Family Center, which is just across the street from the hospital on 26th Street. Here we have a lot size of 9,285 square feet, and the ground floor of this multi-floor building is the area devoted to the early learning center, which is approximately 4,274 square feet in total. They have six onsite parking spaces along the alley, which is at the bottom of the page. Off of the page to the top would be street parking on 26th Street, which is nine additional spaces that they created with this permit process. They've stated their child capacity is 40 children. Lastly, it was asked that we include the Samish Early Learning Center. However, I do want to point out that this is permitted in the R2A zone. Daycare II facility would continue to be a conditional use process in the R2A zone, but as an example, this property has almost 15,000 square feet with a structure size of 4,130 square feet, six onsite parking spaces, plus overflow parking that help with the Samish longhouse use adjacent. And just reiterating that the conditional use process outside of the R4 zone in residential zones could continue to look at parking if they feel that additional parking beyond what was the previous two examples needed, as the Samish Early Center here is lots of parking. Our current parking standards for daycare is that the planning director is the decision, is the decision-maker for all daycare facility, all daycare II facilities regardless of the zone. This is often determined after the applicant has hired and paid for a parking study showing the impact the use may have on the adjacent streets and neighborhood. This process is expensive and can be seen as a burden on the childcare provider's permitting budget. As it was presented to the Planning Commission previously, staff is proposing that the minimum required parking for daycare II facilities in the R4 zone equal the number of staff on the largest hourly shift. During the public hearings with Planning Commission, a commissioner had asked about reducing the parking requirements when public transit was proposed to be used. In considering that comment, I referred back to the parking chapter of the municipal code and can confirm that the modification to parking requirements in the R4 zone is an option for applicants with the requirement that they propose a transportation relation option that reduces the parking demand in exchange for reduced minimum parking spaces, and the planning director must determine that they meet the intent of the parking Here are some examples of other municipalities daycare II parking requirements. I'm just going to go through this slide, so bear with me, but Bellingham requires one for each staff person working at any time, plus provisions shall be made for an adequate drop-off area located off the street. Mount Vernon requires one parking space for each employee, plus loading and unloading areas. Burlington requires one space for each 10 clients or children, or one space for each staff member, whichever is greater, plus one loading and unloading space for each 20 clients or children. Stanwood requires one space per classroom, plus one space for each 10 students based on the rated capacity of the facility. Marysville requires one space per staff member and one space per 10 clients. A paved, unobstructed pickup area shall be set aside for drop-off and pickup and picking up children in a safe manner that will not cause the children to cross the parking area or lines of traffic. Lastly, Everett requires whichever is greater, one for each 10 children, or two for each three employees on shift. In addition, one vehicle loading space for each 20 children. Here is an example of what an early learning center with two classes of preschoolers might look like in regards to required parking in each of these jurisdictions, plus showing our proposed parking requirement. I want to draw attention, though, to Burlington and Everett, who have specific number of stalls required for pickup and drop-off, where we have included language that is more flexible, as each site will be different, and it may be more effective to have an alternative design to a specific parking stall location. We will see that here in just a second, that language. Also asked to present staff, or staff was asked to present, an example of a total breakdown of size of the building, staff numbers, number of children, and this example shows an early learning facility providing care for one group of infants, one group of toddlers, and one group of preschoolers. Here we have a total number of 44 children with a minimum number of staff of eight. Minimum indoor area for children, to children use would be 1,900 net square feet, and then in addition to that would be the areas for bathrooms, storage, electrical, mechanical closets, hallways, laundry, et cetera, the areas that are not for children use. And in this example, we would have eight required parking spaces. Here is staff's recommended, original recommended daycare II facilities, addition to AMC 1944010. After discussion during Planning Commission's September 14th public hearing, Planning Commission has recommended the removal of Section B 3D addressing maximum building size. Comments from the commissioners included the belief that current development standards, such as building setbacks, maximum lot coverage by building, minimum landscaped area, open space, are all general code standards that adequately address concerns of scale and massing. Additionally, going back to the examples presented earlier, both the approved Anacortes Family Center project and the Samish Early Learning Project are both buildings that exceed 4,000 square feet. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Pollard. Any members of the public to discuss? Counsel? Oh, whoops. Do we have a somebody? Okay, yeah, come on up. Please state your name and...
Hi there, my name is Zeph Arvenitis. I just have a quick question. What is the rated capacity of the Samish Early Learning Center? Do you know?
The building code, I don't know.
Sorry, no, in terms of like number of children?
Um, they have not...
Ah, got it. Cool, thank you.
Counsel, and this is a discussion item, so I'd ask counsel if you get an opportunity to look at both the resolution and the attached, and attachment A, and again, other sets of eyes. I think the parking regulation was well, well-explained of the proposal from staff. Mr. Young?
Thank you. You know, what I really appreciated about this presentation was it not only showed the stratus of what's available, where we have holes, and what's being proposed. I really appreciate that. And I think that what's very clear about where we are, if I could just sort of point to Ms. Cleland McGrath, having said that to me many times about the need for daycare centers, and so I'm very supportive. I think at the end of the day, this is one of the many components we need to work with within our city to make us not only competitive, but if we're competing for the workforce that everybody's clamoring to try to get, I think this is just a necessary component of where we have to go. There are other pieces to this we need to augment, but very clearly, this is something I think we need and I'm very much supportive of.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments or questions from Ms. Pollard? Mr. McDougall?
I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Young said. This, you know, I'm very much in support. I'm actually just kind of curious, the maximum building size of 4,000 square feet, just why that number and why not bigger or smaller? I, I don't feel strongly either way, but just was curious about that number.
There were, my understanding there wasn't really a specific reason. It was, there was a concern that possibly a large national company would come in and want to establish a very large center, and so it was presented to, you know, consider a maximum building size if the officials determined that would be necessary. As time went on and the two examples of our daycare II facilities in the R4 zone were permitted, we realized that they met the appropriate development standards and presented a good example of what the city can support, and they were over 4,000 square feet. And so that, we just kind of just kept discussing with Planning Commission, and we were okay with their recommendation to remove that item. I was going to see if Don was still here, if he wanted to add anything, but there really wasn't a specific reason for the 4,000 square feet.
Mr. Walters? Did you have more to say, Mr. McDougall? Okay, Mr. Walters?
Thank you. I agree that we should strike subsection D there, the maximum building size, limiting it to 4,000 square feet doesn't, doesn't really make any sense when in lower-density zones, the R2 zone, to which this does not apply, but in those zones, we have permitted larger facilities, the most recent of which had zero public comments, I think?
Correct.
Yeah. Now, I think neighborhood childcare centers make a lot of sense, and the reason we're doing this overall is because we're at such critical levels and because it's so important to have childcare available for people in Anacortes, to put people back to work, to enable them to go back to work, but also because the, the cost of childcare is so In the R4 zone, you can permit an assisted living facility with no upper limit on the size. Most of it's in the medical use overlay, I think, or, or a lot of it is, where there's an unlimited size on the medical-related facilities that can be in that, in that overlay zone. So I would strike D, but I would also make a couple of other changes here. First of all, daycare, under the definition, applies to childcare, but also adult daycare. We don't have any, but we do have a need for adult daycare. Are adult daycare facilities licensed by DCYF?
They are not.
I, I didn't think they were, but even if they are, or even if they are in the future, I would reword that subsection C. I wonder if you might put it back on the screen to back up a slide here. I would reword subsection C, so it says the facility must meet any applicable DCYF licensing requirements, which I, I think is a little, it's a little more straightforward language to begin with, but it also clarifies that it's a licensing requirement. It's not necessarily their wax, because they may have, you know, some provision for waiving some of those under some circumstances, but whatever their licensing requirements are. And then in the, the first line, section three, says daycare II in the R4 use zone, and it says "as designated in table 1941040." It's just not necessary to have that language. So I would just strike that, because that table is what controls the permitted uses anyway, so it's just excess, excess verbiage. Otherwise, I think it, it's really straightforward. You know, we had to deal here with passenger drop-off and parking, and I am assuming that approved passenger drop-off means director decision, and the rest of it is, is just pretty easy. There may be more opportunities in the code. I'm sure that there are more opportunities in the code to find provisions like this, where people spend thousands of dollars and put a lot of money at risk and are thus dissuaded from pursuing some of these facilities at all because of the conditional use permit process where it doesn't add any value. So I would encourage us to keep looking for those. So I'd like to move now to approve this, including these changes. So the, I move to approve the ordinance as presented with the following modifications. Delete the words "as designated in table 1941040." Reword subsection C to read "the facility must meet any applicable DCYF licensing requirements including interior floor space fencing and outdoor open space area," and then deleting subsection D.
Okay, yeah, I think I got that, and more importantly, staff got that. So a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Moulton, and I think the plan would be we'll bring it back, though, for final, final vote, but I'll take a vote on this one as well for those changes. And I'll do a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye, conditionally.
Wayne of order.
Mr. Walters?
Sorry, just, just for fun here. You need to vote, then you can speak.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walters. So my vote is no, and I want to...
Okay, motion carries, and then Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mayor. The only reason is that I very much support daycare centers. I do think that there should be some standard, and I wanted to acknowledge the thought of the 4,000-square-foot limit for the very purposes that you stated. I think it's important, and then even if we needed to make some changes at some other point. So for that reason, I am voting no on that, because I do think 4,000 square feet is a gracious plenty. If we need more, then we deal with it. But right now, I think that that's good for a town of our size, so that's why I'm voting no for the record.
Got it. Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Cleland?
Thanks. So then I get, so that goes back to the other question, so for example, using the family center, launch apartments, right? Launch. The childcare facility, is that actually 4,000 square feet, or do you count in addition the apartments above?
There was some language discussion about that very topic, and it was... There was some language discussion about that very topic, and it was originally presented to Planning Commission to determine, and in their discussions, they ended up with the decision just to strike that altogether.
Okay. And again, as a reminder, we will bring this back for a formal vote for ordinance 4024. Mr. Walters?
Yeah, and I think the plain reading of that line, the line that we're proposing to strike here, would, would restrict the whole building size, even the portions that don't contain childcare, and it wouldn't provide any way to exceed the 4,000 square feet. There wouldn't be a conditional process or anything else. You would just be stopped at 4,000.
Thanks. And...
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you, ma, thank you again. I think that that sort of cleared up a bit for me. I was focusing initially on the idea that 4,000 square feet, you know, as it relates to the childcare portion of it. And so I would appreciate when we come back for discussion, that you elaborate just a little bit on that, and then I think it will clear it up not only for me, but probably for other people as well. Thank you.
Well, staff will bring this back to council with those voted changes for a final vote. Thank you, Ms. Pollard.
Thank you.
All right. We are on to item 7B, 2023 operating budget governmental funds, and I know that's why everybody is staying here, because we want to see this. And I'll give Steve a little bit of time to, to set up, but Mr. Hoagland will present, and then you'll get to hear from each of the directors on their areas on the budget, and, and they'll be ready for any and all questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, members of the audience, just really quickly, I wanted to go through a chart that I put in the council packet. This is an update to the tax rate chart that I had in last week. I realize there was an error. I appreciate Mr. Walters' feedback on, on this, but it was in the line that shows affordable housing. So in the, in the yellow, this is what I really wanted to point out, in the yellow here, it shows the voter-approved items, and in City of Anacortes, the voters approved one-tenth of 1% sales tax to be used for affordable housing, and then the two-tenths for the Transportation Benefit District, which is for the overlay program. There was a statute change in 2021 that allowed that one-tenth of 1% to be adopted through council action, which all the cities and the county have done now, but Anacortes is the only city in the county whose voters approved that. So I tried to clarify that. Everything else, I think, is the same. Moving on to the budget review, so the governmental budgets tonight, we, we reviewed Public Works last week, and we're on to governmental funds this week, and a couple of, couple of things, just kind of housekeeping items related to the budget. So I first want to apologize to Ms. Moulton, a lot of confusion about the, the versions. So there have been a few different versions of this budget spreadsheet now, and I spoke to her on the phone earlier today, and what I realized after I got off the phone with her is when you print this file in Excel, you come up with a different number of pages than when you print the PDF. So the version that you were using is correct, the last one that was released on Friday by Mr. Franciac. So this is the, the departments that we'll be going through tonight, some, just a couple of overarching things, and we've touched on, on a couple of these, and the mayor touched on a couple of these in his budget message, but I did want to point out the liability insurance. That's something you'll see kind of department-wide, citywide, as we go through. That went up pretty significantly from 418,000 to 786,000, and at the same time, we did an analysis of the, the claims that have been filed against the city, and that shifted. So in addition to having an increase in the liability insurance, it shifted more of the cost of that liability insurance to the water fund. So you'll see that, not necessarily tonight, but as you review the, the budget in general. There, we removed revenues and capital out of this budget that we're reviewing tonight. A large reason for that was, the same reason we have multiple versions out there is in getting to know and understand how to use OpenGov efficiently. We realized that there were duplicate rows that were exported into Excel when we tried to export the budget. We're still working on trying to get that, that cleaned up, but we did review revenues October 3rd, and we had the public hearing. We reviewed capital as we reviewed the CFP with both Public Works and governmental CFP projects. So what we have left in operating is still what has not been covered at, at any level. Staff costs, again, you'll see that pretty consistently. We mentioned that before. It's a six, 7.6% increase citywide when you look at staff costs in both salaries and benefits, and that's largely driven by the collective bargaining agreements. So, so with that, we'll jump over to admin services.
Yeah, and I think again, that these spreadsheets are directly from OpenGov. We're not, we are, I just want to make it clear to council, we're not, we're, we're working in OpenGov still, but we're just trying to present the information in a clear, clear manner as possible.
Yeah, exactly.
So yes, you can still feel free to, you should see the same information in OpenGov. So, okay. Sorry, Mr. Hoagland. Over to you.
Okay. So I'll turn this over to Ms. Yu, and we'll start going through admin services.
Mayor, council, members of the audience, and it is very nice to have members of the audience here as we're talking about the budget. It's not something that, that has always been the case. As my role as administrative services director, I'll just give a little bit of an overview. It's a, it's a bit of a mishmash of my responsibilities, which include responsibility over the Human Resources and Labor Relations Department, the Information Systems, fiber, and also the municipal court and public defender's office. So I'll be up here kind of talking about several things, but I thought I would just first touch base about the, the comment that Mr. Hoagland made in terms of the insurance premiums increasing from our liability insurance. So just last week, I attended the Washington City's Insurance Authority annual board meeting, and one of the things that we continue to, to hear about is the, the cost of claims are going up, and it's a hardening insurance market. We continue to look and evaluate what the reinsurance amounts are, what we are covering above and beyond, and where the gap insurance is in place. Some things that are just causing that to, to occur is just really directly related to, to the inflation that we're seeing and the supply chain issues that we're seeing. If we do have some, some damage associated with something that we've done as a city of Anacortes, we, we work hard to, to resolve those claims, but sometimes when it's difficult to get parts or materials or a contractor there to do it, they are seeing a, a cost of that look, and result in higher costs across the entire pool. So that's not specific just to the, the city of Anacortes. That's the, the entire Washington City's Insurance Authority pool. The way that they evaluate and determine what our costs and premiums are is that they evaluate where our claims have been and the number of worker hours that, that we have that we submit through Labor and Industries for every, for every quarter. So that's a bit, a bit of, just a little bit of background on, on that. The other thing that I thought that just might be, be helpful to, to talk about is that the, the city really does continue to look at the cost of compensation for our employees. We also recognize that inflation is not going to be keeping up with our, with our revenue streams, but, but we're very much an organization that is based on the services we provide as humans. It's not computerized systems, and so, you know, the, our biggest expense across all of the city is in our personnel costs. So we are really working to try and ensure that we have livable competitive wages and keep that within the realm of, of a budget that we can present. So we have collective bargaining agreements that are finalized and settled in 2023 with our police and fire bargaining units. They have a bifurcated agreement, which means that January 1, they'll get a 2% increase, and then on July 1, they'll get a 2% increase. The overall effect is that it provides them a 4% base wage increase over the year, but the cost to the city is a little over 3%. So that is driving costs. Our insurance premiums from a health and welfare standpoint actually came in quite good this year. The medical costs are what really are the driver for that, and our rate increase was four and a half percent for regions where the primary, the majority of our employees are, and a little bit higher, 7.6%, I believe, with Kaiser Permanente. That's interesting in itself, because Kaiser has a very different model, where they are not only the insurance company, but they also are the provider. So it'll be interesting to see the, the effects of the pandemic as it continues to move forward and to apply specifically to the, like, for example, the region's insurance. So that's just some background information that I think is helpful to consider as you look at all of these budgets tonight, because salaries, wages, and benefits are the, the primary driver. The other item I wanted to, to mention is that in 2021, there was a salary study that was completed and incorporated, and because that was still being done late last year, I don't believe it actually applied into the wages for the... So that is something that was, was taken into consideration. It's just that the implementation of that final study, and those are all incorporated in the 2022 final budget that's on the website, and those salary schedules are available on the, on the website as well, too. Okay. So now I will get back on, on track and specifically talk just about the, this first budget, 130. This is actually two separate budgets, but it falls into the, the BARS accounting number of 130. So this includes our municipal court, which addresses, we have a court administrator and two court clerks. We contract with Skagit County for our judicial services. So it's very much a hold the line budget in terms of municipal court. We do try to, to break out all of the, the specific costs that you can see here for professional services, where we are contracting for services. So things like interpretive services, indigent screening, the judicial services with the Skagit County, the probation services with Skagit County, those types of things. The, the area about two-thirds of the way through where it shows as an adult misdemeanor is where we transition over to the public defender's budget. So the public defender's office has one full-time public defender and a legal assistant. They do a very good job every year also of being very conservative in, in their, their use of the, the budget. You will see that we're continuing to put $25,000 in for conflict attorneys and overflow cases, and that is consistent with the, the parameters of which the, there's some case limitations for how many cases a public defender can hear in a year, which is 400. We're not running into issues with that, but we do like to make sure that we, that we have some, some buffer. I'd be happy to talk about any questions that you have for municipal court or the public defender's office.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Well, maybe the first question is the heading there for the division name, adult misdemeanor. Is that driven by the BARS manual? Could it not say public defender's office? Is, would that be wrong?
I think it's directly from the, the BARS, and it's not something that we have the ability to override. I've asked that multiple times, too.
And just out of curiosity, when, when this budget is explored by people through OpenGov on the web, are they going to be able to figure out what that category is? Probably not.
Yeah, probably not without, without digging. At the same time, the public defender's office does not handle any misdemeanor cases that, for juveniles, so I guess it's kind of accurate. Just not real clear that it's a, you know, the, the city's in-house public defender staff. This is the Information Systems and our Technology Department, where we manage all of the computing and networking requirements for the, for the city. We have worked very hard to, to build a very stable environment, and I know that over the, the last five or six years, that there's been significant resources put into the information systems and technology, and we're very appreciative of that support from city council and, and mayor. Every year, the number of systems that we're responsible for continue to grow with new hardware and software requirements. I think that Jose Cervantes, our manager, does a very good job of identifying not only the professional services, but also the, the work tools and equipment, and we have good systems in place in order to identify when a piece of equipment is eligible for an, an upgrade as it, as it ages out. So that's where you'll see the, like, the desktop computers. You will see for the small tools and minor equipment that last year, that we had $428,000 budgeted, and it has decreased to $103,000. That was because last year, we had really during the downturn and the, and with, through COVID, really had turned off any kind of just replacements, and we did some pretty significant replacements at the Anacortes Police Department with replacing all of their MDTs this, this year. The, the other area I just really wanted to draw attention to is in the, the professional services. We, we do have a lot of professional services that we utilize to ensure that we are doing as much as possible to create a very safe, secure network, and that we do have money in the, the budget this, this year for increasing our network storage capacity, for the additional Laserfish licenses, both with that transition at the Anacortes Police Department and for the municipal court. We are going to be implementing a password manager to secure all of our passwords, and then restructuring the network segments to improve some of that security and protect the, the critical data. We continue to, to work on cybersecurity awareness with our staff. When it really comes down to it, where the, the greatest weakness is, is always the, the person involved at the, at the end. So trying to just continue to work on that, and we are, Windows 11 Enterprise will be our primary operating system for all of our endpoint devices in '23. Any questions on the IT section?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
I think this is probably a similar question to Mr. Walters on just the, the category of professional services. I noticed, you know, things like exchange server migration, like very much, you know, consultants kind of help with that sort of thing, but a lot of these line items are, are software licenses. And do we have an alternative to professional services for software licenses where it kind of makes more sense, and where, or are we also kind of stuck with categories?
I know that many years ago, and really, and Mr. Hoagland's the specialist on that, but in the, the BARS manual was, used to be, you know, we had many more layers of differentiation, and they really worked to, to consolidate it. And so you're going to see professional services in all of these same titles across all of the, the budgets that, that you'll look at.
Can be a little bit of a catch-all for...
It is.
Okay. Fair enough.
Mayor. Mr. Walters.
Can you describe any work that we do on an ongoing basis or occasionally to verify that we need all the licenses for all the software products that are listed here?
Yes, we actually do audits and just completed one with Microsoft to, to evaluate the, the number of licenses that we have and the, the level of those licenses. We also are doing that with the Laserfish, and we are increasing the number of licenses this, this next year. But like just this week, I received an email saying we've utilized all of the licenses that we have for Laserfish. We have a new employee coming in. We don't have one, so we're kind of piecemealing things till, till the end of the year to, to ensure that we have that. So yes, that is being looked at. We're also doing audits of our cell phones and, and ensuring that we, we don't have any out there that are not being used, and we had multiple that were turned in this past year as a result of that. of that audit.
And how about the Eden software? Do we have that listed in the capital facilities plan as an item that needs to be replaced? And what's that schedule?
Yeah, and March 1st of 2027 is the end of life for the Eden system. We do have it in the capital facilities plan. It's something that we talk about internally quite a bit in terms of trying to find an alternative. At one point, when we were moving forward with thinking about some different alternatives to Eden, which we use for all of our accounting systems, human resources, a lot of our permitting activities, it's really an integrated system for us, we hadn't reached out and we were talking about doing a transition to just another Tyler Tech product, and they had said that it would be like a several-year transition just to that. So we have that and are very aware that it's going to be a very big, time-intensive project and expensive.
This is something that I worry about quite a bit because we've been talking about in the Finance Committee occasionally for quite a few years. It's maybe a half million, maybe a million, you know, expense, multi-year transition, and it seems as though we've already begun transitioning away from Eden for various departments, which has pros, but it also has cons.
So one of the, there is a program through Microsoft specifically for governmental programs that we are in the process of getting a demonstration set up in the upcoming weeks. And so we just want to look at that. It's our understanding that the port of Anacortes is currently utilizing that and has been pleased with it.
I have wondered if it would be worthwhile spending some money on a consultant to assist us in finding another product, building an RFP to find another product, because it's such a big deal, because it runs so much of the city, because it's so complex, and because we have not done that with the products that we have recently purchased, including OpenGov, including SmartGov. I don't recall if HR ended up getting new software or not, but I know we were talking about that. And for something this big, it seems to me that we should be writing down our requirements, doing an RFP rather than just picking something up off the shelf.
And I think we actually...
And might be required to budget for that, for that consultant work.
That's a good idea and maybe something that, you know, that we'd want to look at, but I do think that we actually had looked at that and even had like a request for proposal, a draft of it several years ago. So that is something that we have been thinking about.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
Just a very quick, just, I guess, comment on, or on the larger numbers, like, outside of, say, Microsoft Office, you know, productivity, software, and Laserfish and Eden, which are basically, you know, city operations, the vast majority of the spend outside of those three big ones are like IT security, cybersecurity items. And that's really important that, you know, we're spending that money because this is critical technology infrastructure, and it's also really complex. So I just wanted to highlight and call out the team for the good work there because that is, you know, they're covering a lot of layers of security with all of these tools. So, you know, commendation for the team. Thanks.
Thank you. I will mention just along that line that Washington City's Insurance Authority does have a cybersecurity rider that they offer to us, but the rate continues to increase, and it's just offered as a package to us. Everybody is in or out. But when they went to try and get that coverage, our prices went up, the amount of coverage went down, and they said that some cities really don't have the systems in place. But I'm really proud of, you know, I see the survey that we do every single year, and we're able to answer all of the questions affirmatively when it comes to cybersecurity, just foundational. And I think that our team is doing a really good job in that, and it helps me to sleep better at night, so. But it is something that I actually just suggested, and WCA is going to be, starting to pay for some of the costs associated with the critical insight, the managed detection and response system that we have, just as next year, they're going to start paying for that for some of these cities that don't have as robust of an IT department.
I appreciate those comments, Mr. McDougal, because I'm always asking, why do we have so many of these different software? But believe me, they explain to me all the different layers of security that we have, and they're all critical.
Thank you. I will now transition over to HR. And I'm very excited because the mayor is going to ask for your confirmation of Riley Winn as the Human Resources and Labor Relations Director in January, and I've had the opportunity for the last year and a half to work with Riley, and I'm just so excited for the opportunity and the way that she is managing that department. She's doing a really stellar job, so very excited to see where we're going with that. One of the things that looks kind of interesting or unusual within Human Resources is that the staffing time is split up amongst the different responsibilities, and so that's why you see the travel, the salary and wages showing up multiple places within the Human Resources. So in 2023, I will continue to be a resource as much as Riley wants, but my time will not be allocated into the HR and Labor Relations, but, so my time got switched out and kind of spread out over the other departments I'm responsible for. So very good news. We do have the collective bargaining agreements with the police and fire settled. We are in negotiations with the Teamsters right now, and a lot of the civil service work that happens on every other year basis was done this year, so you'll see a little bit of a reduction in costs with civil service for next year. Aren't there any questions on the HR? Thanks.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I'm noticing, just sort of wanted to point out that I think it's Human Resources, it's the first great area. I think we've got 80,000 budgeted in 2023. I think it's got diversity and inclusion training, AWC membership, background investigations, pre-employment screening, anti-harassment training, safety supplies, recruitment, MSDS, online database, drug and alcohol testing. That seems to be a broad catch-all, and I was just wondering if, you know, I think grouping some of those, like the anti-harassment training, would be something that would be very, you know, much grouped with diversity and inclusion training of cultures that we have here in the area. So I was just wondering why they were grouped together and if there's any merit to sort of separating them out just a little bit, because I think that when you group them in such a broad spectrum, it defeats the purpose for some of the areas that may also be just as important, but it doesn't in no way mean to negate any of the others. But I just think that it's such a broad category that you really end up losing part of the purpose of having that as a line item within.
Thank you. Again, as we talked about, that professional services, it really is a catch-all for anything that we do on a contractual basis where we're spending, and so we tried to identify those kind of, the key areas that make up the majority of the costs associated with that. So in, you saw in IT, we laid them out individually. Here, we put it together just as one because, as you can see, like, the budget goes on and on because it already has broken out into multiple different areas. But thank you for the feedback.
So just to make sure that I'm clear, too, what you're saying basically is this is just for the purposes of this line item, so you don't have just this unruly document, but part of the request for funding that you put in as a line item specifically has budgets for each of those items, because my only concern would simply be, you know, online databases is very different than anti-harassment training. Those are two very vastly different things, and I think that we should have budgets for both.
Thank you for the feedback.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
To tag on to that, and this is not a question for you, keep in mind that we adopt a one-page budget where all of this detail is lost, and all we adopt are the levels for each fund. So if, for example, any one of us is interested in making sure that diversity and inclusion training is budgeted, nothing that we adopt will mention that in any way unless we were to add it as a proviso to the budget ordinance, and the $80,000 that's on this line item could just get moved to travel and training. And there's no city council constraint on that in the traditional way in which we adopt the budget.
And I would say that we utilize this when we are, when we receive a bill, that we go back and look at this document to determine the appropriate BARS number for it, and we track the expenditure status at the level of the BARS number. So the likelihood that we're going to be $80,000 over in training and travel when the mayor wouldn't allow that, but two, we're really tracking it at a BARS level to be like, oh, we've, you know, spent all of this this year and, you know, but we haven't spent that, but we're trying to balance it. The final area is for Anacortes access, access fiber internet. So as of end of business on Friday, we had 1,628 businesses and residential customers in service. We have another 1,500 that continue to remain in the queue waiting for that service to get to them. As we've talked about recently, then we are in an operating cash flow positive, so we're bringing in just over $1.2 million per year in revenue. What the budget is not necessarily identifying is that the majority of our expenses are capital expenses, and that will be, you know, we've talked about that as part of the CFP rather than the budget, which is just looking at our operating, at our operating budget. We do continue to explore both our debt service options and grant funding opportunities for the continued build-out. Next week, we will have the meeting with the Gwemy's View contractor to give them the notice to proceed for the Gwemy's View expansion, and we are continuing to work towards having the request for proposals for materials out by the end of the year for the EDA area. So with that, we'll have the majority of the areas in Anacortes covered by the end of 2024. The one remaining area will be the South Fidalgo area and the UGA area. So we're working towards that, too. We're really appreciative of the support, not only of the mayor and council, but the other departments of the city with the support that they provide us with the program, but also knowing that we have been, you know, a large financial impact on the budget while we're doing this build-out. I think all the work that you're putting towards it is coming to fruition, so. Happy to answer any questions that you have about it. We did try to lay out, again, like, the professional services and, you know, where our main operating expenses are.
Mr. Walters.
So where does this document reflect, or does it, the revenue needed to do all of the capital projects next year? It doesn't? Okay. So then will we note, I am proposing that we note in the budget ordinance our reflection of that, our understanding that we are going to have to figure that out? I'm certainly supportive of figuring that out and not having an answer for it right now, but I just think that we should note that in the budget ordinance.
And when we approve the budget, we also are approving the capital facilities plan that specifically is laying that out, both the revenue sources and what's not covered. So we're looking at that.
And can you repeat what you had said? You had mentioned South Fidalgo expansion. Do you mean, well, tell me what you mean by that.
Basically, following the city limits along Highway 20, following Highway 20 and that business corridor. I probably used the wrong terminology. I'm sorry.
So Highway 20 toward Oak Harbor from Sharp's Corner or Highway 20 toward Mount Vernon from Sharp's?
Highway 20 towards Mount Vernon.
Okay.
Out to Reservation Road, following the city limits there.
Okay. So within the city limits?
Within the city limits.
And within the city UGA.
Continuing to stay within the city limits.
No, I think you bring up a valid point because this is a little bit, because this is the operation budget, it doesn't show the significant investment that we're still planning for the capital, both the Gwemy's View and the EDA area. That is a huge amount that I've talked to all of you about coming up. So again, I think that's a valid point to make that clear in the final budget document, that significant amount of money.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Ms. Schu, could you scroll down a little bit? And I think that this is what, part of what we're talking about, are the costs listed under other improvements that were $5 million in 2021, $9 million budgeted for 2022, and then a hyphen for 2023? So that's kind of what you're talking about here, right? And it also, this sort of gap appears in a couple other spots in the budget, and so before we adopt it or when we adopt it, that'll be clarified.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So the budget doc, the budget that you will adopt eventually, it'll consist of that entire, the entire budget. All of the 2023 capital requirements will flow into this, and then the corresponding revenue sources to support these, the budget will be part of that. As Mr. Walters pointed out a bit ago, what gets adopted is the, at the fund level, the ordinance at the fund level, and those expenditures that are listed are balanced with revenue sources as well. When we come back two weeks from now for the public hearing, that's the intent, is to have that full document available with the combined expenditure, operating and capital, plus the balancing resources to pay for those.
Great. Thanks so much. I know OpenGov has been a little bit of a, has had its priss nicety.
Yeah, it's been, it's been interesting. It's been a very interesting learning experience. What, we're used to just importing and exporting data out of Eden, and we were expecting that OpenGov would have that same kind of ease of use in that capacity, and it really doesn't. A lot of our questions were answered with, well, you just do a copy and paste. Well, so I give OpenGov a lot of credit for being open to our suggestions, and their programmers have worked with us to make some of those changes, so we'll get there eventually.
Great. Thanks for all your hard work on this.
All right. I think we're on to the next one.
Yeah. Planning Department. So one thing I would mention while Mr. Meesmer makes his way up here, the BARS structure that you've been asking about, I'm very encouraged to hear the interest in seeing additional detail in that, and I did want to make clear that the state provides this structure that we use, the BARS numbering structure, and at the end of the year, as part of our annual report process, we have to upload all of that data out of our accounting system to the state. So we try to keep the amount of, you know, physical edits that we have to make to the data at a minimum, and that's really why we have this level of structure that you see here without a, it's not more detailed because this is the level of detail that the state requires. If we were to go into much more than that, then it would require us to do more consolidation at the end of the year to make that upload.
Mayor, members of the council, and of the audience, the Planning Committee and Economic Development budget remains fairly the same as last year. We do have a couple of requests that you'll see. One, you probably heard a little bit about during the Public Works presentation, and that is a half FTE for stormwater inspections, stormwater reviews, as well as what is called source control inspections and reporting on various... source control inspections and reporting on various businesses and industries in town. And that is a, a new requirement of our stormwater permit, which you probably saw more of a few months ago when you adopted some of the stormwater language by ordinance. And so again, we're sharing that FTE with the Public Works Department, and we're excited about having this person in Planning Committee and Economic Development because currently we have our building inspector and code compliance persons kind of doing double duty. They're out doing stormwater inspections, stormwater compliance and things like that. So, you know, when we get a call for an inspection for what's called best management practices, that's where they go out and they check on silt fencing and various site conditions. So it's important for us to have that help. We are also looking at the 2021 code cycle. So we're going to need some training for our building inspectors, plans examiner, and also new code books. And that code would be required to be adopted by June of 2022. Where some of the other items that you see in here is what's called the land capacity analysis for the comp plan update. So we're looking at that coming onboard here. It's due in 2025. We're going to need to start working on that land capacity analysis this year so that we can have it done in time for us to determine what we're looking at for a number of units that we can actually get in, in what's available for, for the land. We have a proposal for a new inspection car. Reason for that is right now we have one inspection vehicle, we have two inspectors, and it's becoming increasingly difficult to get a pool car, almost impossible. So we really need that, that car. We've also shown in here our yearly cost for Smart Gov at $22,350. Our intention is to have Smart Gov implemented fully by the end of the year. By doing so, that allows us to drop the Eden permit module at right about $50,000 a year. So you can see right off the bat there, we're saving close to $26,000, $27,000 or so.
Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Will you be transferring data from the previous Eden module? Will you still have access to that data? Is there any issue there?
All of that data is going to be transferred into Smart Gov, so.
And we're confident that that'll work?
Smart Gov is very confident.
Okay.
Yes. And so we are also, as you know, we also have our GIS interactive map. And so tons of information that we have in our permit module has been transferred into that interactive map. So you can click on your structure, your address, and look at everything we have on the permit files. Pretty good. We have our HUD grant, usual stuff there, community action, not really anything else. We do, of course, you know, salary and wages are going up based on the, you know, negotiated agreements and salary survey, but nothing unusual there. If you have any questions, be happy to answer that, but it's pretty straightforward.
Any questions? We move on to, I can't remember who's up next. Mr. Hoagland?
Next is Legal.
Yeah. Right in order.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor Miller, members of council. The legal department budget is pretty straightforward. The legal department provides support to the other departments, and so the bulk of our budget is with the staff time to provide that support. So the, the structure of the department is I'm the in-house counsel for the city. We have two contracted prosecutors. We have a contract specialist. We have a legal assistant who oversees Laserfish. We have a legal assistant who supports prosecution and public records, and then a legal assistant who supports contracts and my workload. So the noteworthy budget items are just acknowledging that there are two professional services line items in the legal budget. The first one is for codification services. That's the line item that covers our muni code, our code updates online. And the other one, the other professional services item, covers the contracts that we have with our city prosecutors, and it also covers additional outside council expenses. The biggest, the biggest change that you'll notice is for staff costs, and I think Ms. Schu and Mr. Hoagland did a nice job of addressing some of that. And in addition to those factors, we've also increased the, the legal assistant, Mr. Franciac, who supports Laserfish. That used to be a .5 FTE, and now it's a .75 FTE. So those are really the only changes. Other than that, the rest of the items are similar to what they were last year, and we look forward to being able to continue to support all of the departments and you. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Police Department. So Chief Floyd will make his way, make his way up.
Good evening, Mayor Miller, and members of council, and the community members in attendance with us tonight. As Mayor Miller mentioned earlier, I went back and reviewed public comments for the last couple of months and would like to provide an update on what your police department is doing to address some of the issues that have come with the homelessness problem. Many of those come in the form of crimes that we're seeing, many of those including drug activity, littering trash, public urination, defecation, leaking wastewater tanks, and in general, non-mobile RVs and vehicles. We've addressed those with infractions for violation of the 72-hour parking order. Working to keep those individuals encouraged to move every 72 hours in compliance and keep their RVs and vehicles in working condition, because that is a common problem amongst this population, is they don't move because many of those vehicles are no longer in running condition. We've issued numerous criminal citations for littering, criminal charges for leaking wastewater tanks. Just at the end of last week, I distributed our new drug referral form that enables our officers to charge misdemeanor crimes after the third contact with individuals that have illicit narcotics. After those two referrals for treatment, they'll be charged through the municipal court with misdemeanor crimes. And we've worked with, as was mentioned earlier, with property owners and obtained authority for our officers to trespass individuals that are found on the property and occupying that unlawfully. As I lead into the budget for the Police Department, as Ms. Schu had mentioned earlier, our bargaining units have settled contract for the next three years. And last year's budget proposal, the anticipated contract negotiated wage increase was not listed. This 2023 budget proposal has not only what was agreed upon with the bargaining units for 2022, but also the agreed upon increase for 2023. So I will skip the salaries and wages portions and go directly to the areas where you'll note increases worthy of a little further description. For professional services, you'll note there's a approximately $15,000 increase. This is all of our licensing agreements for our investigative tools, leads online, computer forensic tool licensing. This also covers professional dues that's required by some of our staff members. This is our policy management software. But most importantly, the pre-employment screening, as we have requirements from the Criminal Justice Training Commission to perform certain pre-screening prior to submitting a name to the academy. Our psychological exams have had a substantial price increase for 2023, and so all that would be covered under the professional services. The $50,000 contract with Anacortes Family Center is going to remain unchanged in price structure for 2023.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Chief, the line right above that, inter-fund services, is looking like quite a substantial $120,000 increase out of a $270,000 budget. Can you tell us more about that?
I believe that's going to be our ER and R fund. So that would be vehicles and other items that we play into ER and R that's on a replacement schedule. And if I understood correctly, those were funded at 50% last year, and I believe it's funded at a little bit higher rate this year.
Hmm. Maybe we could get a briefing on that separately?
Yep.
Because I don't note the same jumps in other departments' inter-fund services line items. Circle back later with Steve.
Maybe I'll also mention that is where the IT, the nodes are collected, and we have new computers that are, that were deployed this year, but then that puts it in a replacement schedule moving forward, too.
Good catch. We can clarify that one?
I'm sorry, what was the question, Mayor Miller?
Oh, no, I just was answering Mr. Walters. We'll clarify that one.
Yes, sir. The one increase I would like to draw your attention to for salaries and wages is a proposed addition of a halftime FTE to focus on parking enforcement. And I have some numbers to share with you to illustrate that need. In 2021, our parking control and animal control Officer Naibo responded to 498 animal complaints. To date, in 2022, for the same category, she's responded to 517 animal complaints. Parking complaints were not tracked prior to 2022, so I don't have any data from previous years to offer you. To date this year, we have received 358 parking complaints. Correction notices, which would be the warning notices that we issue on vehicles, along with the orange window paint that you would see. In 2021, we issued 123 of those, and this year Officer Naibo's issued 185 to date. In 2021, she issued 26 infractions, and to date this year, she has issued 42. And finally, for the entire year of 2021, we towed 26 vehicles, and with two and a half months left in the year, we've towed 25 this year.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
This position has historically split time between animal control and parking.
Hold on, Mr. Walters? Oh, that's okay. I thought you were going to move on to something else. I have questions on this item when you, when you get finished with your summary.
Mayor Miller? Okay. So we'll let Chief finish, and then Mr. Walters, and then Mr. Young.
Just to make sure we're clear.
On this halftime FTE.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure it's on this particular subject. Thank you.
So she's traditionally split time between animal control duties and parking enforcement, along with the occasional code enforcement and junk vehicle affidavits. With the volume of parking complaints, and specifically her spending a fair amount of time addressing derelict RVs and other vehicles around the city, I think it's a good response to, to requests from the public to address those with a little more scrutiny and a position that's dedicated to parking enforcement.
And was that, so that's your, that's the finish on the half FTE, right?
Correct.
Okay. So before I turn it over to Mr. Walters and then Mr. Young to ask you the question, I'm going to help you maybe clarify the uniqueness of that code enforcement versus, say, a code enforcement that in the Planning Department, as far as like when it comes to junk vehicle affidavits, being able to look up information about the vehicles.
Yeah. So I have checked into the requirements for accessing Department of Licensing information, and for us to be able to grant that to an enforcement person, they have to be paid out of the Police Department budget.
Thank you. That is exactly, okay. Mr. Walters?
Yes, my sister-in-law worked for the Planning Department in the Police Department in Bellingham, so I'm familiar with how that can work, does work in other jurisdictions. Mount Vernon is another one. But my question is more this. I think Officer Naibo particularly is, has been described by many as the most busy police officer on the force. So I'm certainly supportive of more parking enforcement because there are a lot of complaints that we get from businesses on Commercial Avenue of, especially employees of the businesses on Commercial Avenue, parking, taking up customer parking, not making available parking for tourists and others. I've witnessed quite a lot of parking across sidewalks by people in neighborhoods that don't have curbs, and blocking sidewalks is an inconvenience for me. It's really a problem for people with disabilities. However, I am wondering how the .5 aspect of this will function. Are you anticipating hiring halftime an additional person, or are you anticipating shuffling duties around and reassigning them? Or, tell me, tell me what you think.
I would be looking to hire an individual specifically for this.
And do we have a reasonable level of confidence that we could hire, I mean, somebody for halftime? Is that an attractive position to people?
I think it potentially could be very attractive to an individual that has school age children, that is looking for a job to be able to do while they're in school, Monday through Friday.
Okay. And I understand in Mount Vernon that the parking enforcement person more or less covers their salary with parking enforcement. I don't think that we're going to cover our salary by doing parking enforcement on homeless RVs, because I'm not sure that that's really worth doing even, but, or at least for the revenue side. But otherwise, do we have any kind of projection on what revenue that might bring in?
No, we don't. I, I think that the RVs is definitely the most visible concern at this point, but as you previously stated, there are many other parking issues across the city that do need attention, and with Officer Naibo required to split her time between the collateral duties, it's not getting even the 20 hours a week that this halftime position would dedicate to that.
And this one would be dedicated, so they'd be out there.
Correct.
Working on that. Yeah. Tickets in Mount Vernon are like 20 bucks, and as I recall, they were 10 bucks if you paid them the same day or something like that. So they're not onerous. And yet, they were making quite a bit of revenue just, just doing parking enforcement.
And with the limited time she has to dedicate to that, studying the current revenue numbers would probably not be an accurate depiction of.
Sure.
What would be generated.
Sure.
Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mayor Miller. I guess my question is about the half FTE being for parking enforcement. I thought that, I may be mistaken, but I thought that there were other issues of code enforcement that this also would tie to as a city. And so I was just wondering, is this specifically for parking enforcement? Or is, there was some discussion about parking and just code enforcement as a general rule, and I'm noticing the language here is more about parking enforcement. So I was just wondering if other code enforcement issues and challenges that sometimes get directed to you as a police department is being handled by another department or another individual? You get what I'm. You get what I'm pointing to on that.
The building department does have code enforcement duties as that applies to some of the building codes and more administrative code violations. But the code enforcement that would be associated with this position would be specific to banning their junk vehicles. Many times, there's a property owner that has a junk vehicle with no VIN plate on there that they can verify. And we'll have to help them with that before a scrap processor would take those vehicles.
Yeah, that was, that's what I was trying to highlight, that the code enforcement from Mr. Meesmer's department can't, can't do the junk vehicle affidavit search or have access to that, those systems. And they do often go out together, especially on our problem houses that we've, we've notified. There's been occasions where we need the, the police code enforcement to go, Ms. Naibo to go out there and, and do, do those searches that.
No, you did a good job, Mayor, of delineating that. I just wanted to make sure that I was clear that that was a very different thing. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Moving down under our travel line item, the fees from the Criminal Justice Training Commission have increased for 2023 to $4,500 for every recruit that we send there, with four vacancies currently open to fill. There's potential there. And those fees have increased from $3,500 last year to $3,750 this year and $4,500 for You'll also notice a increase in uniform purchases, which would be also to outfit four replacement officers and uniforms, specifically the ballistic vests have had substantial increases for 2023. The patrol and investigations office and operating supplies, our radio platforms and less lethal weapons, to include tasers, all take batteries. As those pieces of equipment start to age a little bit, the batteries have to be replaced, and they're quite expensive. This also covers investigative forensic tools, cost for our K-9 program, less lethal ammunition. Moving down to the 911 center, I don't have any control over the increases in 911 fees, but that is allocated based on department size and call volume. You'll also see a substantial difference under facilities and professional services. This is our jail pass-through account for the public safety sales tax. Those numbers are forecasted by Mr. Hoagland, who's on the jail finance committee. And lastly, under machinery equipment, you'll see a fully equipped patrol vehicle. It was brought to my attention by our fleet manager that over the course of multiple chiefs now, we have moved positions or created new positions and not allocated a vehicle for those positions. And we've been operating vehicles that are technically off the ER and R replacement schedule as a way to make up for that. And there is currently three vehicles that have not been replaced historically throughout that time. We hire the four vacancies that we have currently. We would be short a couple of patrol vehicles, and I'm proposing to replace one of those this year and then spread that out over numerous years instead of all at once.
Young.
Mr. Walters.
So I know there has been discussion in the dark corners of City Hall over the years about the number of vehicles the police department has. I understand other police departments don't have a vehicle for every officer, but we do. Is that right?
We do.
Have we looked at a model where we don't? Because if we're talking, you know, 30 vehicles, have we looked at a model?
We've discussed that with fleet management. When we, many years ago, went to the assigned vehicle program, there was numerous reasons for that. One, the vehicles within the neighborhoods as a crime deterrent. And the vehicles tend to last longer as assigned vehicles than they do as fleet vehicles. Potentially fleet vehicles, everybody wants to drive the new one, and the old vehicles really don't last as long. So we were seeing increased lifespan with officers assigned to vehicles. They get taken care of a little bit better. And we're getting a little more on the back end when we sell those vehicles because they're in better condition when we mile them out.
Do you know how many vehicles we would have if we didn't have a vehicle for every officer? What would be the difference between what we have now and under a different system?
We could probably reduce that vehicle fleet by at least 10.
Maybe from like 30 to 30 to 20 then, somewhere in that neighborhood?
We currently don't have 30 vehicles. But yes, I mean, by 10, probably conservatively, we could reduce that number.
You have 27 now, is that right?
I have 28 approved positions. We have 28 vehicles if you count the ones that are off the ER and R replacement schedule.
Okay.
Any other questions for the Chief? And I appreciate him not throwing me under the bus for the 911 increases, because I do sit on that board. I'm one of seven votes, and yes, those fees got increased. All right, I think Fire is up. How is everyone doing? I need to press forward. I think we've got three more to go. Mr. Hoagland, we have three more to go, I think. Fire, library, museum, and, oh, four more parks.
Oh, sorry. Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we have Fire Department, Museum Parks, Library, and then I'll, I'll follow up at the end with.
Okay.
Yep. So page 13, Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The, so.
I'd be a little closer to the mic there, Chief.
All right. So while we are, do have two separate budgets between the General Fund and the EMS Fund, most of them are speak to kind of as a whole. We operate as a whole, and I'll bounce back and forth just a little bit between the pages. But I'll try to stick mostly with the General Fund to start, and then we'll move pages to the 110 Fund later on. Overall, the combined budgets are about $7.6 million, which is about 10% over what it was in 2022. The vast majority of that is, or a large majority of that, is personnel costs. We've already talked about a lot tonight. The other large portion is just about $310,000 when we get to the 110 Fund that we can point it out, but is increased write-offs. That's not necessarily a bad thing, and it's directly linked to increased transport revenue. As the billing rates go up and the number of transports go up, so does the corresponding write-offs. And the way that we have chosen to budget here in Anacortes, we, in the revenue side, we put all potential billing in and then take out the write-offs. Beyond that, mostly it was a hold-the-line budget. So I did, you'll see a few lines with some significant increases, but to correspond with that, there's a lot of lines with some small increases or decreases to make up for that. I'll talk about the larger ones, and then if we'd like, I'll answer questions about anything that might be smaller. In the General Fund, under professional services, that line went up by about $26,500. Big chunk of that was the fact that it was a little bit underfunded in 2022. It's, we talked about, that's a catch-all for a lot of services, a lot of online platforms, a lot of services, including our medical and health screenings. The other, we added about $10,000 of new money into that for increased medical screenings. Specifically, we're looking to do cancer screenings for firefighters in 2023. Next line is small tools and equipment. That one's up by about $24,000 for a couple of reasons. One, we'll need to outfit the brush unit that we're currently building or will be built this next spring. Also, we had a lot of hoses fail due to date and due to physical failures during testing this year. About 30 sections of our two-and-a-half-inch hose will need to be replaced. Doesn't necessarily all have to happen in 2023, but I'd like to get the majority of it done. The other thing in small tools, again, back to our health and fitness initiative, we're going to try to add a treadmill to each one of our three stations for the fitness program. Operating rentals and leases, that's up by $7,000. That's fixed. That has to do with Station 3's rent increasing, and also we added Marine 29 this year. So that's the port fees for mooring that boat. That's a significant increases in the General Fund. In the 110 Fund, if you want to scroll there. The most significant increase in the EMS Fund was $9,000 in the communications, and that's one, it was a little bit underfunded again for 2022, and also due to increasing 911 costs is the majority of that. Like I said, there's a whole bunch of small decreases, but one significant decrease is, actually, it's back on the other page, but it's under the 6041 account, which is professional services, but under the disaster preparedness. That has to do with our contract with Curtis LLC coming to an end. This next year was going to be his last year anyway as a consultant, consulting for the city of Anacortes. But we kept it, we took that from $50,000 contract to a $10,000 contract as he's going to stay on to help us through the FEMA training that we've talked about a little bit in the past. And that's all the significant changes. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for the Chief? Mr. Walters?
On page 27 there on the screen, you do have $100,000 more overtime.
I believe it should be about, which, which line, I'm sorry? It shouldn't be 200. Altogether, it's about $80,000.
There are a bunch of notes about how Finance has adjusted various other line items, benefits paid with overtime adjustment. Can you cover, you or Mr. Hoagland, can either of you cover some of that?
No. Yeah, I don't understand that one.
That's just to indicate when, that we, we adjusted the benefits amount to reflect the additional cost for overtime. So when we, when those benefits are first calculated, it's based on just, you know, flat time.
Okay.
And then the overtime generates additional cost.
Okay, so that explains those descriptions on the various line items. So what about the additional budget for overtime?
Yeah, so the overall, the overtime lines altogether are about, I think, $76,000 over what the 2022 request was. What happened there was, as you'll recall, I think it was in August, we looked for a budget amendment to increase that by $150,000 for 2022, which doesn't reflect on this. In essence, we kind of split the difference between what turned out to be actual for 2022 and what we projected. It's not quite as simple as that in the sense that we're also looking to add some off-duty training time in that number, in addition to sick leave, anticipated sick leave, vacation leave, things like that. We are trying to get to about six hours a month per employee of dedicated training time that'll average out throughout the year. That's why that's larger. Yeah, so it's about 80%, 80% is in the EMS Fund and 20% is General Fund.
Okay, so I note that it's $100,000 here, but it's, there's a reduction of $21,000 on page 13.
Yeah, so that, so that was, so what happened there was, the way that we designed it in 2022, the way that it was being, we just set the budget up at, I think it was 64, 16, 4 and 4, those aren't exactly right, the way that it was supposed to come out of four different salary lines and overtime lines. What we set up, and then after it was set up, we changed it to an 80/20 split because it had to do with the way that we draw GEMT funds from the state. And we didn't want to have any discrepancies between how we allocated salaries and overtime and how we charge the state for GEMT money. So after it was set up at the 65%, we changed it to 80%. So it was withdrawing differently, which made much less in the fire side, if I'm saying that correctly.
Okay, and so the 2022 budget column here, though, is, that's the original budget, not the amended budget?
That's exactly right. It's a great point. It was when you, you may remember, I brought a budget amendment earlier this year that adjusted the fire EMS overtime. So if you looked at the adjusted overtime level versus the 2023 requested level, they'd be much more comparable.
And again, we're trying to do our best to present apples-to-apples comparison with the planned budget for 2022 versus the planned budget for 2023. But, good catch.
I don't know, I prefer the amended budget, I think, in that column.
But, but you answered your question correct of what they, okay, that's the important thing. All right, any other questions for the Chief? Okay.
All right, next up is museum, so I'll jump to page 14.
Mayor Miller, City Council, my name is Brett Lunsford. Thanks for having me. Presenting a straightforward, hold-the-line budget for 2023 for the Anacortes Museum, and happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
He is ready for questions, if you have questions.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Well, there aren't a whole lot of changes from the previous budget, but you have programmed fewer operating supplies, including maintenance supplies evidently. Do you have sufficient maintenance supplies in this budget?
Yes, yes, we do. We're sufficient supplies for our needs, and we feel confident we can meet our goals and serve the public with what we've requested.
I think that the painting contract that we had before us a couple of weeks ago is for an amount larger than the budgeted amount in the 2022 budget. Is that right?
That's correct. It was, and based on the ability to complete that contract this year due to the weather window, we'll see exactly what that, how much we're able to accomplish this year and potentially how much might need to roll over into next year from that amount. But that's, that's just based on the ability to complete that. Yeah, yeah, that was, that was from some cash reserves in the museum fund that were from donated monies.
And there's some painting and stern wheel repair in this budget.
That's correct.
And this one's budgeted less than the original 2022 budget. So are you doing a much smaller scope on that stern wheel repair?
Yeah.
And do you, and do you expect it to come in at the budgeted amount, or is there possibility that it might come in higher?
Yes, there is a possibility that it would come in higher. I'm, I budgeted an amount that would allow us to proceed with some of the, the vertical painting as opposed to the deck painting, which was part of this year's, the 2022 amount that we requested. It, and based on 2022, the, the estimate did come in higher, so I wouldn't be surprised if in 2023 it came in higher. But we will, we'll do what we can with the money budgeted to address the, the painting of the, of the Preston.
And finally, do you happen to know offhand what your reserve amount is in the museum fund?
It's in.
This is the General Fund, I mean, isn't it?
Yeah, it's.
So where does that reserve live?
So it's a restricted cash line that came in from museum donations over the years that have saved up. I, I believe it's around $35,000 that's there now. So the idea was the balance of that contract that council approved a week or two ago would be made up with those restricted monies. would be made up with those restricted monies.
Okay, so it's a restricted cash?
Yeah, exactly. Yep. Yeah, restricted cash line within the general fund. Yep.
Any other questions for the museum? All right. Thank you.
Next up is parks. We'll jump to page 18 for the Parks and Rec Fund.
Mayor Miller, ladies and gentlemen, council members. So like others have said, we are also doing a hold-the-line budget. We are fully staffed this year and into next. So as our programs rebound from COVID, we're fully staffed to meet the community's expectations from our park maintenance to our cemetery maintenance to our recreation program. So we are pleased that we had, you know, 500 and some children in our soccer. We're able to do our haunted forest coming up, our wanderland walk, things that the community expects from us. We're able to fully do again. So we're pleased about that and are grateful for the budget to do that. So some of the changes you'll see in our budget, as Ms. Schu said, you know, the 7.6% salary and benefit increase that you will see is similar to what we have in our budget in Fund 101. That's Parks, Recreation, Senior Center, Depot, ACFL. So that Fund 101 takes care of all those, those facilities that we have and systems we have in parks and recreation. And so that budget has gone up in Fund 101 by 8.73 in 2022. So some of the changes outside of salary and benefits would be bringing up our operating supplies to 2019 levels, adjusted for inflation. So for example, we've kept our operating supplies down the past several years due to COVID restrictions and COVID budgets. So this year, we worked together with Mr. Hoagland to bring up that line item in Parks and Recreation and some other ones by about the core inflation, which was about 5.5% at the time, a little bit different than inflation you'd see 6.6 or whatever. So that's kind of some of the adjustments that you may see that we have made so that we could purchase the things that we need in those line items for parks. That'd be fertilizer, that'd be our garbage, that'd be everything that we do in the parks to keep that running. You'll see some, a little bit of an adjustment in our utility services as well, irrigation, electricity to keep up with inflation. So that's Fund 101. In Fund 102, that's the cemetery. Thank you, Mr. Hoagland. In Fund 102, you'll see a similar increase. That's about a 10% increase. In that one, we brought up our operating supplies as well to try to meet some of the needs that we have. And you'll see that in the budget for salaries in Fund 102, there's quite an increase because I shifted some budgets around, which I'll explain as we go on, to show where some of the folks in our staff work. So some of the management staff, I shifted them around so their FTEs come out of different funds. So for myself, I come out a little bit of every fund. Other management staff are specifically in, say, 101, some are in 102, which is Cemetery, 107, which is Washington Park. So you'll see that we have split those out to resemble more of the work that they do, and those funds can pay for the work that they do. So Fund 102 has about a 10% increase that notes those changes and some of the increases that we're doing in some of the operations there. And a little bit in utilities because we've expanded the cemetery. Fund 107, that's Washington Park. Well done, Mr. Hoagland. Thank you. So that is an 8.7 increase. That's roughly the same that you'll see in the other funds. Let me just pull that up. Yeah, our, our operations that there go for everything from toilet paper to garbage to the things that help us keep the park, you know, the things that we do in our campground to keep it functioning well. Our professional services there are largely to cover the cost of the machines that we have that take in the pay and keep those software systems going, credit card services, et cetera. And finally, Mr. Hoagland's? Fund 113. So Fund 113, that's dedicated to the community forest lands. You'll see a decrease in that budget by about 22.2%. And that's not that the forest lands aren't being cared for and the stewardship, the values have changed. It's that during COVID, we put some salaries costs into Fund 113 to help us cover that. Now that we're out of COVID and we're trying to get back to similar levels, we pulled some of the costs out of 113 again and back into 101. And also the quarry fund revenues have stopped. So acknowledging that that has stopped, we wanted to balance that budget. So we've decreased that by a little bit. In that fund, it's not much comparatively because it's a very small amount. So you'll see the decrease there is about about $16,000 when it comes to real dollars. So that 17,000, you see, that goes to fund our seasonal staff and the full-time staff I took out of that and spread it across the other funds as appropriate. So that's why you see that decrease. Any questions? I'm happy to try to answer them.
Mayor Miller? Mr. McDougall?
Just a quick one on the ACFL, the professional services. Is that for, is that like Heart Lake Mill Foil sort of maintenance and removal on a yearly basis? Or is that something else?
Right, so that's a couple of different things. Thanks, Mr. McDougall, for that question. So that is our contract with the Friends of the Forest. They do all the educational programs in the forest lands. The city has a contract with them to do some of that. Some of that has been with the land trust as we do new things. We just set aside a little bit of money in case we get donations to do work in there. We've done quite a bit of that last year, so a lot of that is taken care of. And then small contracts, just like you mentioned, like things at Heart Lake. Through the surveys, we need to do the science to make sure we're doing the appropriate applications of herbicides if we need to at the time. Thank you.
Mayor Miller? Mr. Young?
I know, I guess my question is, there've been discussions in the community. I've been approached by any number of people about longer hours at the senior center simply because of as it gets darker, seniors are by themselves, you know, looking for things to do. I was just wondering if, as you wrestle through how and what you want to do there and what's economical, is there any wiggle room in that to possibly consider that?
Oh, absolutely. As we see things rebound from COVID and we wanted to do some expansions to those hours, we could certainly do that, if not through our own staff, then some of the contract staff and consultants that we use to offer programs in the evening and then work with the Senior Center Foundation, which is a fantastic partner, to help us augment that if that was a budget shortfall. So that wouldn't be reflected here. That'd be a budget amendment that you see quarterly through Mr. Hoagland if we made those decisions.
And I will add that you've done, in my opinion, a great job of working with those groups in order to bring it about. It was just a discussion that was coming out through various seniors who are either by themselves, who relish the work that's being done at the senior center, look forward to it, but as it gets darker, and, you know, I guess, I'm not sure what you call it, but, you know, just sort of the doom and gloom that sort of comes when it gets dark hours. Just trying to see if that was still a possibility. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Walters?
Mr. Lunsford, you say you're fully staffed. How, how is that manifested? Where, where could we see what it means to be fully staffed?
Sure.
And this is not a question unique to parks, but to the museum, to the library, to all the services that we provide. Do you have a spreadsheet somewhere that describes the level of service that we are trying to achieve? Not in the technical sense, but in the management sense, you know, what, how often we expect to cut the grass and how often we expect to run this particular recreation program? And how many staff are required to achieve that?
I don't have it broken down that way, that specifically. I can tell you that, you know, so for our maintenance staff, during COVID, we went from seven to five and sometimes lower if people were out for illness related to COVID and the thing. So down to two and three sometimes. So we brought in our recreation staff and had the agreement with the Teamsters to bring in management staff just to carry out the day-to-day operations of mowing, trimming, and providing various programs that we could during COVID. So that has changed. We've hired the season, the full-time staff and maintenance. We were down to one person at the senior center, which was okay because we were closed but trying to offer programs and participating with other departments to try to find ways to reach our seniors. We've brought back our administrator in Carl Wolfswinkel, who was hired for that position. So now we're fully staffed at the senior center. Dustin South, as you know from our recreation manager, is also putting time at the senior center to try to augment our 0 to 99 reach to the community to try to blend our recreational programs throughout the generations. So by fully staffed, we have all the bodies that we had pre-COVID to do the work that we do in the community. If you're interested in that, like how often we mow and those kinds of things, I could bring that information back to you and do our best to kind of reach the needs you're asking for through that question. Or meet the needs, sorry.
Yeah, what we're trying to achieve just generally is just more insight into how to know what the appropriate staffing level is for the variety of things that you do and not just your department either. But, you know, if we hear, if we hear complaints that the, the public wants a higher level of service at the cemetery, you know, I'm assuming that that's a constraint that's imposed by the amount of staff that we have. And where do we really plan for that? You know, where do we describe, you know, this is what we're going for, and this is what we think is appropriate, and we're going to provide staff to match that level?
Right.
And if we had 20 extra staff, we would not be
Right.
individually moving grains of sand at the cemetery, you know, that level of detail.
Sure. So for us, just as a broad brush stroke, seasonal staff is so important for all that we do during April through September or half, you know, past Labor Day for, because that's when the grass starts to grow in April. And sometimes that's where we'll fall behind if, as in this year, it was very difficult to find seasonal and part-time staff throughout, not just parks, but I think the whole community and perhaps the nation. So that's, sometimes we see a shortfall in a, a, a request from the public for more services in that regard. So ours is very weighted in that way. We don't need that seasonal staff when things are dormant and things are a little bit quieter. So, but again, I can try to get you that information and we can go back and forth.
Yeah, anything that you basically already prepared would be useful.
We can have that conversation. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Lunsford?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
Next up, library.
All right.
Mayor Miller, members of the council, library is also doing a hold-the-line budget this year. Besides salary and benefits, we've managed to even decrease a few lines. So first up is salary and benefits, which many departments have talked about the increases, anticipated increases there. Next one is office and operating supplies. So that's your typical stuff. And then some library-specific stuff like library cards, RFID tags, passport supplies. We spend several thousands of dollars on postage for mailing passport to support that service. The next one is supplies purchased for inventory and resale. We affectionately call that the books budget. You can see how it's broken down over the next seven lines. So adult collection, that's adult books, children's books, teen books. And then eBooks, that's our Overdrive Consortium membership, and then periodicals, and then eBooks and requests and databases. And then next line is professional services, again, that's sort of catch-all for all the software that we use, especially the library-specific ones, like our Biblionics Apollo, which is our library catalog for front-end and back-end. And then you can see all the details, Visionware is our self-check and RFID maintenance contract, and a whole bunch of subscriptions for scheduling software for our meeting rooms, our passport services. And OCLC is how we do interlibrary loans and Get on WorldCat, which is a library-specific web service. And then a whole bunch of other little things there. Before I go further, are there any questions about those two line items? No? Okay.
Mr. Walters?
Well, backing up a little bit to the eBooks service.
Yeah.
This is the Libby service?
Yes.
Yeah. So when you log onto there and you find a book that you want and you check it out, download it to your Kindle or whatever?
Yeah.
Occasionally, it's not available. Is there a higher level of service that would make more available to people that are using this, this service?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, you know, we're a member of the consortium, so we, you know, everybody buys books. But we can actually buy, and we do buy titles specific to Anacortes. So when we get an eBook request, actually Steve submits a lot of eBook requests, and we'll purchase the title with the library budget. And then that title is available in Libby, but only library, Anacortes library patrons can see that title. So there's an added benefit of, you know, purchasing for that. So that's, we have a budget there, and then our library foundation actually supplements that budget as well. I should have mentioned that our library friends supplement our physical books budget last year by $25,000. We wouldn't be able to fill all the requests for books in a year without that support. So, yeah, did that answer your question?
Yes, except is, in addition to that, which I didn't know about and is very useful now, is there just a higher subscription tier to that consortium service that would provide more books of it? To be generally available, not specific books?
There, there isn't. I mean, we, we did, we paid for, actually, the foundation paid to add magazines the previous year, and then I worked with the state to try to convince them to add that to the consortium, and they did. So initially, that cost was $5,000. And now with it added to the consortium, it's round two. And magazines are, you know, they're, they're ultimately, they're infinitely available, unlike the eBooks where the publishers limit how many checkouts even electronic materials can do. So, but right now, there isn't any added service through, through Overdrive. However, we do have the foundation pay for Hoopla, which is another service that, that has eBooks, audiobooks, music, and movies. And currently, that subscription, it's a pay-per-use, and it's currently costing about $25,000 a year. And the foundation supplements that, so.
Mr. Young?
Yes. Jeff, I just really want to commend a service. You know, my spouse gobbles up the eBooks. He gobbles up. I've, I've heard so many mysteries and videos this week alone in his retirement. No, but it really is a sort of a backend complement to the work that's being done, not only for the eBooks and, you know, those downloadable things, and also the DVDs that you can check out, has been a superb service. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next line is communications. So that's our phone service. There's a slight decrease there just based on the actuals from 2022. Travel and training I reduced. Again, we're getting more support from the library foundation in that line item. So there's a little bit of savings there. Then travel, the next travel and training under line 43 account code, that's the mandatory CPR and bloodborne pathogen training.
Ms. Molt?
I'm really sorry to interrupt. I think we might be, are we a page behind?
Oh, yes. Excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're on travel and training there. And there's two of those. And one is, is for specific to librarian and staff training, and then the other is the CPR budget, which doesn't change, so. And we're seeing a little bit of savings in our under, our inter-fund services this year. We, we really did a good job of making sure that all the equipment we had was being used, and if it wasn't, we got rid of it. So we reduced that line item. Saw a little bit of savings there. And then the next, so professional services, that's another one for cleaning and landscaping. Insurance utilities, of course, we're seeing an anticipated increase there. And then the last is the repairs and maintenance budget, which traditionally was 16,000, which has been zeroed out. And that's because that, that fund is being moved over to facilities and managed by MAC. And that's how it's really been for years. So the actuals, you can see from 2021, were only $3,900. So, so it's almost 30,000, well, over $30,000 in savings in the discretionary funds that we have control over, so. Any questions?
Any other questions? All right, it's a good time to thank of all our foundations, you know, the Friends of the Library, the Senior Center Foundation, Parks Foundation, all those wonderful groups that helped fill in some of the, some of the gaps that we can't always fill. So I want to acknowledge that. All right. All right, Mr. Hoagland, what else we got? This is, sounds like you now.
Yeah, just a, just a couple, couple more things to look at. We're almost done. So this is the legislative budget. So you can see here, there's
So you can see here, there's really no changes in the 22 budget under professional services. The adopted budget of $15,000, it should have been closer to this $31,000 request we have. We pay both the SCOG and AWC dues out of that. The next line, Department 120, the mayor's budget, the only real change here is a little bit extra requested in professional services. This is when, for when the mayor likes to or would want to hire a consultant for mayor council retreats and a little bit more in the, the training arena for the conferences the mayor attends. Next one down is the finance budget. The only real increase here that I am requesting is in professional services. This $58,000 is primarily to pay the state audit fees. We have been getting a lot more federal grants in recent years and with the federal grants comes additional audit requirements. They run 40 to 50 hours per program. We know we will have at least two federal program audits next year, possibly three. Additionally, the auditors are increasing their fees from $116 an hour to $128 an hour and we currently have a 735-hour audit budget. And then a little bit more travel and training next year. The Nationwide GFOA conference is going to be in Portland. It's not in driving distance very often, so I'd like to send a couple of staff to that. And that's about it. The other, the other funds that I had listed here to go through is affordable housing, sales tax, which is just an in and out to the, we split that 50/50 with the family center and the housing authority. Impact fees, which is associated with capital projects. We talked about that. It's about a $700,000 match to the R Avenue grant in 2023. And then the tourism fund, which is just balanced against the estimated revenues. The lodging tax committee is still doing their work and will have a recommendation coming to council in the near future. So any questions about any of that or anything we've covered tonight? Be happy to try and address it. So next steps.
Mr. Walters.
Travel and training in the legislative budget is $1,000 even during 2021, which was still COVID. Actuals are around 600. We do have new council members. It seems as though some of them might want to attend AWC conferences or those kinds of things in person and maybe bumping that up might be important. I don't know what our 2022 actuals are or if we're even exercising that budget very much right now for 2022, but for 2023, if there's any in-person attendance of anything, it busts that line item. We should be able to figure that one out.
Yep.
That's a good comment.
Any, any other questions? All right.
I was just going to mention next steps would be November 7th. We have public hearing on the budget and then I'll introduce the, the ordinances at that time as well and then council can determine next steps from there.
So, so you're going to see the resolution, right? And you're going to see all the, all the fun, the big picture funds. So again, now's the time to ask all the detailed questions. And hopefully this presentation, you got the detail you were looking for without us messing around too much in Open Gov. But again, Open Gov is still available and it's still, we're still confident it will be the transparent budgeting program that we all hope and dream it will become. All right. Well, I think that's it, but we do have another item on the agenda. Item 7C, which is termination of contract 20-032 SEW 008. Ms. Swetnam has the item for us. I know we thought we were almost out of here at three hours, but.
I only have a 30-minute PowerPoint presentation, so it'll be good.
Good luck.
Thanks. So, so thank you, Mayor and Council. So item 77C tonight is a recommendation from staff to terminate contract 20-032 SEW 008 and the contractor on this is Pacific Pile and Marine. This was a contract for approximately $7.5 million to do the in-water work to replace and relocate the wastewater treatment plant outfall. And this project is FEMA-funded. There are, there are multiple layers of permitting that has to happen. The city awarded the contract and unfortunately it appears that permits are going to be delayed to, to a timeframe that's unpredictable at this point. So staff is recommending that we work with the contractor who's done good work to date to procure materials, to terminate the contract and then relet the contract when permits are in hand. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Mr. Hash is also here as well, but staff does recommend taking this action tonight, which council can do by motion.
Counsel.
Mr. Young. I move we make the adjustments as presented, that we move that we, you approve it as presented. Thank you.
Second. Okay. A motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Carter to termination of the contract 20032 SEW 008, Pacific Pile and Marine. Mr. Franciac, could you take the vote, please?
Mr. Walters. Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. With no further business, I adjourn the 24th of October, City Council meeting. Thank you.